On June 16th, 2021, former Governor Charles Baker signed into law an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. This act includes an extension until March 31st of 2023 of the remote meeting provisions of his March 12th, 2020 executive order. Thus, this meeting will be held by a remote participation by the board, and I'm going to go ahead and grant Westwood Media Center permission to record the meeting and ask, is there anyone else wishing to record the meeting? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go into the chair's update, and we're going to start out with some 25-year employee recognition awards. Each year, we recognize town employees who've reached their 25th year of service with Westwood. It's a remarkable milestone and reconfirms the employee's commitment to serve our community. This year, we have three employees who have achieved this milestone. So Roy Harris of DPW, James Lopez of the firefighters of the fire department, and Brad Pendell of the police department. And all employees will be provided with an engraved clock as a gift from the town. Let's see, is Todd's probably not here, right? Because he is prepping for the storm. So Chris, do you want to talk about Roy?
Well, we have Chief Silva, if you want to have. You want Chief Silva to talk about Brad first?
Well, let's do that. Yes, Chief, why don't you talk about Officer Pendell?
Oh, great. Thank you. Good evening to the chair and to the board and everybody in attendance. Officer Pendell is known to just about everybody, I think, in the community. As most recently is our school resource officer, he's been in that position for over 20 years. What some people may not know is that Brad has done other duties for the police department and other things for the community here in town. He works as our juvenile officer. In addition to the school resource officer, he's worked in patrol on all three shifts, and he's worked coaching in the area, in the greater Westwood area, and most recently, over the last several years, as the head coach of our high school varsity football team. So Brad touches and feels, as they say under the law, or interacts with our community in a variety of different ways. Brad also grew up here in town. His family has a career contribution of public safety. His mom was one of our crossing guards. His brother is on the fire department. And he lives here in town with his wife and his three boys, Cole, Deacon, and Ty. So Brad is tied up with one of his boys tonight, which is why he couldn't make it. And then he has to come back to work a little bit later to meet with Youth and Family Services. But Brad certainly has given a number of different contributions, varied and different contributions to the town and through his work here at the police department and otherwise. And we're certainly very appreciative of his service. And he passes along his thanks to the board and his apologies for not being able to make it. But he had to take care of one of his boys. You can imagine with three of them that he and his wife are often going in three different directions at three different times. So he couldn't be here.
Something we can empathize with, most of us on this call. So I've had the good fortune of interacting with Officer Pendell at a number of events throughout the time when my kids were here in the schools, and wish him certainly congratulations on this 25-year milestone. Anybody else? Mary Ann, Michael, want to say anything about Officer Pendell?
Here, here. I echo what you said, Rob, and thank you, Chief.
Yeah, and I know Brad, I know Brad very well. My son played football for four years, so he knows Brad very well. Great job.
All right, next, Chief Deckers, why don't you take us through a little bit of James Lopez's time here with us?
Okay, James is actually on the call. He's working this evening at Station Two. Hopefully, he'll be able to stay out long enough to be able to accept this award from you all, because they could get a call and he might have to leave. But firefighter James Lopez joined the Westwood Fire Department in 1997 after completing four years, four and a half years with the US Marine Corps. He received his paramedic license in 2010. He was one of the first folks in Westwood to do that. And he really was part of the original paramedic build-out of our service. He's now our senior firefighter. So he's the number one firefighter. He basically wears badge one, if we had a badge one, in the department. He lives in Millis and is the proud father of five adult children. And if you want, he can explain a little bit about his time here. He's on with me also.
Excellent. Well, James, feel free to have a word, because this is certainly a great milestone for you, and we'd like to recognize you.
Good evening. I don't know if you can hear me.
We can.
Okay, my apologies. It's my first Zoom meeting.
Lucky you.
Exactly.
It's a very humbling thing to get rewarded for this, and I really appreciate the town recognizing me for my 25 years of service.
Well, thank you not only for your service to the town, but also to your service to the country with your time in the Marines as well. So congratulations to you, and thank you very much for being in attendance with us tonight.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and Chris, do you want to talk about Roy?
Sure, happy to. So Roy Harris is, he's a heavy equipment operator. He's been a heavy equipment operator for us for 25 years. He has worked for fields and grounds and highway teams. Roy has a tremendous amount of knowledge pertaining to a variety of DPW equipment. He's an excellent operator. He's been called upon throughout his career, throughout the department, to work on a variety of things. He's a great team player, and he, like the other, the other two individuals that we've identified as a great representation of what Westwood is. And Roy resides in Norwood. So I would certainly thank Roy.
Heavy equipment will be put to good use tonight with the storm coming in, so thank you.
He's resting up as we speak.
That's right. Thank you, Roy, for your service. Okay, next up, just a reminder that March 3rd is the nomination period ends for the John Jay Public Service, John Jay Cronin Public Service Award. So just a few more days to get those nominations in. The reminder, the award is named for the late John Jay Cronin, who was our town treasurer and gave many years selflessly to the town for the betterment of the community, both as an elected official and in numerous volunteer activities inside and outside the community. You can pick up a nomination form online at the town's website, or you can contact the Select Board's office at selectboard@townhall.westwood MA.us to have one sent to you. And when you are submitting a nomination, you should consider the following criteria: exceptional leadership to the community, years of dedication, diversity of service, volunteerism, and a dedication to the Westwood community. Next, just a reminder that we have a new assignment. As we get the new school named, you have an opportunity to help name that school. You have until, what's this, Wednesday, March 1st, to submit a suggested name for the new school. You can visit the town website under the news section to access the Google form to submit your recommendation. When you propose that new name, we ask that you follow the following guidelines. The purpose of the new name may be to recognize, honor, or memorialize persons, organizations, historical town sites, historical town events, or the history of Westwood itself. The name may also recognize an outstanding contribution to education, humanity, or community at the local, state, national, or international level. Names will not be considered if they tend to undermine or interfere with the educational mission of the Westwood Public Schools, or if they compromise the safety of students and/or faculty. Names of persons currently employed by the town will not be considered. There's a working group that was established by the school committee, which will review all of the submitted suggestions and compile a list of finalists, which will be posted to the school committee's website on Monday, March 6th. The school committee at its March 9th meeting will review the final suggestions and vote on the final name. So get your votes in. Looking ahead to the calendar here, on September 23rd, we will be hosting Westwood Day again, rain or shine. So there will be a lot more information as we get closer, and hope we have as brilliant a day this year as we had in 2022. Next up, I want to give a bit of a, an update on Hail. Now, as many of you are aware, Hail Education is seeking a conservation restriction to protect the 1,100-plus acres that are both in Westwood and Dover from future development. Our town administrator, Chris Coleman, has been engaged in negotiations on behalf of the town so that we can understand the details of a potential conservation restriction, as well as the benefits that the residents of the town could get for the proposed amount Hail is asking for, which is $10 million. Understanding the importance of this issue to our community, I also recognize that my home's relative proximity to Hail raised the potential for a perceived conflict of interest. Now, I'm neither in a butter, nor am I in a butter to in a butter to Hail. However, we are close enough that someone could raise a question as to conflict of interest. So after discussions with and on the advice of council, we had a special counsel contact the State Ethics Office, both in writing and by telephone, to seek confirmation that I did not have any conflict prohibiting my participation. Under the state conflict of interest law, there's an exemption that would apply if we could demonstrate that 10% of the community would also have a similar gain or loss based on the outcome of the decision. Out of a desire for transparency, I've authorized Town Council Pat Ahearn to release the correspondence with the State Ethics Commission so you can see and judge for yourself. Those letters will be able to be found on the town's website tomorrow morning. First, in the first letter, we demonstrated that more than 10% of the residences fell into a similar category as my own home, i.e., more than 10% could reasonably have been said to have some sort of gain or loss based on the outcome of the conservation restriction decision. As you will can see for yourself, the response we received from the State Ethics Commission agreed with our interpretation of the law regarding the exemption. The commission took no issue with the facts and the analysis we submitted. The commission, however, stated we could not use residences as the denominator in calculating the 10% threshold. It needed to be based on the town's population. Okay, so we recalculated the math based on the latest census data, and that was actually more favorable, and submitted that in a second letter. However, the response we received from the commission was a bit confusing, suggesting that we use multiple variables that would be nearly impossible to prove. Unfortunately, when you're a public official, the rules are different. While in criminal court, you're innocent until proven guilty. When it comes to defending ethics and conflict of interest violations, you're assumed to be conflicted until you prove yourself to be otherwise. Given the highly uncertain outcome of this issue and on the advice of council, I'm going to recuse myself from any participation in or deliberations regarding the Hail Conservation Restriction. My rationale is very simple. One, we didn't receive the clear waiver we sought. Two, if someone were to make the complaint or raise an objection, it could taint the process and all the good efforts of the others involved, because, one, I would not be able to participate until that issue was settled. Two, the timeline is costly, a long process, and it's costly. And then finally, the decisions would be made and over before that process was likely to be completed. So therefore, based on these risks, both financial and reputational, it makes it necessary for me to make this decision. Now, I'm disappointed at being unable to participate in the discussion of such an important matter to the community. However, I have complete faith and confidence in my colleagues to handle this matter in the best interest of the town and to facilitate the public discussion to help us get to a final outcome. So that now ends the chair's update. Next up, we have under-scheduled action, a recommendation for our Westwood poet laureate. Now, I know Lizzie is a little under the weather, so did you say, Tish, who was going to take the lead on this one?
I'm just bringing them all in. She told me Maria and Karen. So let me bring them all in.
Maria and Karen, Karen were the co-chairs, while I was on maternity leave, so they can speak to the process, I know, and have some good news.
Excellent.
I'm going to bring the whole group in.
While you're doing that, Tish, at the April 11th, 2022 meeting of the Select Board, the board authorized the library director, the governor, to create and appoint the poet laureate selection committee to search for a recommended poet laureate to serve as our first poet laureate. And as you're letting in the co-chairs, we'll turn it over to Maria and Karen to talk about that process and the outcome of that process. So I don't know who wants to speak first. Maria, Karen?
Sorry, I was looking there to see if Maria was in the room to speak first.
I'm letting her in right now. Here she comes. There's one more, Anne Innes.
Hey, Maria, how are you?
Good, good. How are you doing?
I'm doing fine. So go ahead and take us through the process and what the outcome of the process was, you and Karen.
First of all, thank you for having us join your meeting and taking the time to do this. We were, Karen, I'm going to go back and forth with you, okay? We had a wonderful committee that really thought long and hard about, because we had very good candidates, but we feel that we've made the best possible choice in our poet laureate recommendation. Karen, you want to, we started meeting. What do you think?
Our first meetings happened last summer, and then we met, I believe, three or four times to both set up our expectations for the role itself and then plan out marketing, put out a description of the position, and then read through and talk through the applicants. We're lucky to receive some very strong candidates, and together as a committee, we met two weeks ago to talk through the applicants and their applications and to come up with the recommendation for the poet we have here today. Maria, I'm not sure if you'd like to add more, but I'm happy to talk through our notes for why we would like to recommend.
Sure, you wanted to go ahead.
Sure. So Lynn is a wonderful poet. She's in the room here with a commitment to encouraging writing throughout the town. We are proud to recommend her for the following reasons. One, her notable and ongoing effort to promote poetry in the town of Westwood, particularly evidenced by her work in the public schools and library, where she has planned poetry workshops and visits from published poets over the last few years and in the coming months. Two, her concrete plans for events in the town during her term as poet laureate, for running poetry slims at schools, offering mini-courses at Westwood Senior Center, and mentoring the Westwood Teen Poet Laureate. And then finally, the excellence of her poetry and how it illustrates dreams of, and I quote, "That orange sun, slow dancing down the horizon during winter months in a secular ritual that's as close to a sacred as we have in strange days."
Excellent. Well, and so your recommendation is Lynn Biddy?
Yes, Lynn Biddy, yeah.
Lynn, congratulations. Thank you for joining us here tonight. We look forward to hearing more of your great work and seeing you help spread the great work of poetry through both the school and the COA. So would you like to say a few words?
Well, I'm just thrilled, and I'm over the moon. I'm very excited and looking forward to continuing to do the poetry activities in the community that I have been doing, but also to fold in some new poets that may be out there and not even know that they're poets. I'd like to do something at the Senior Center more than once and also try to do more public events, like a big poetry reading, not just once a year during National Poetry Month, but in other times of the year where we can have anyone come in and read a poem. So I'm excited. Thank you so much.
Fantastic. To turn to my colleagues, Mary Ann, Michael, either of you have anything you would like to say?
I just would love to thank everyone on the committee for all of your work and for your wonderful selection, Lynn. This is very exciting, and I have to thank you for everything you've done for the town and also for giving me the ability in my Select Board preparation packet this weekend to actually read poetry for a change as part of my preparation. That was such a delight. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, and thank you for reading.
You were beautiful. Thank you.
Congratulations, Lynn. So I move that the Select Board appoint Lynn Biddy to serve as the Westwood poet laureate for a term to end on June 30th, 2025.
I second that.
All right, roll call, vote. Ms. LeBlanc Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Lynn, thank you for serving as our first poet laureate.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thanks to the committee, hard-working committee.
Congratulations.
It was a pleasure.
All right, next up, we just have a follow-up discussion with respect to the 23-town meeting articles. So Chris, do you want to take the lead on this?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as the board knows, we've been discussing, the warrant closed, and we've been discussing different warrant articles. And the recommendation that we have for you this evening is, after consultation with bond counsel, we are recommending to the board that we separate out two matters. One is the borrowing for the fire ladder truck. And recommendation will be to use miscellaneous article one for that. And the second is to, for the cemetery expansion, and to use miscellaneous article two for that. So we had those as budget items 12 and 13, and we're looking to make them. No, I'm sorry. We're looking to use miscellaneous articles one and two, and those will be budget items number 12. That will be for the fire ladder truck, and 13 will be for the cemetery expansion construction.
Any questions from either of my colleagues with respect to this one?
Yeah.
All right, entertain a motion.
So I move the Select Board to take the following actions. First, to use the miscellaneous article number one to create budget 12, appropriation of $1,850,000 for a fire ladder truck borrowing. And two, to vote to use the miscellaneous article two to create budget 13, appropriation of $1.5 million for cemetery expansion construction borrowing.
I second that.
Okay, roll call, vote. Ms. LeBlanc Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Okay. Next up, did you want to touch, did you want to touch on anything with respect to the Planning Board articles?
Me at this time, no.
Okay, all right. Next on the agenda was the Dana Farber Cancer Institute Proton Therapy, which is going to be continued to our March 13th meeting. So that concludes scheduled action.
So I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Chair. I know we have Nora as an attendee. I don't know if there's any update that she would like to provide on the point of board articles?
Is she in the room yet?
That is far around.
Okay. Nora, anything to update us on with respect to the Planning Board articles?
Hi, I don't have anything further to report. The planning board still has five articles. They'll be reviewed by the Finance and War Commission on Wednesday. The planning board will have a hearing tomorrow night just to immediately continue it till Wednesday, but there are no projected changes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora.
Okay, next up, we have new business. We have the Little League Parade that they're requesting, Westwood Little League is requesting to hold their parade on Saturday, April 29th. I believe we have a couple of folks attending from Westwood Little League. Alex and Lenny, are they here? Tish?
Hi, Alex. I don't see Lenny, but we have Alex who's coming. He just came in.
All right. Alex, do you want to talk a little bit about this year's parade?
Yeah, thank you. So yeah, we had a little bit of a switch in the Westwood Little League boards. So John Healy has been the president for, you know, a few years with us. He retired from the board, and Lenny Johnson, who was the vice president with John, stepped up and took over as the president. So he's going to be kind of leading the effort this year. I sit on that board too as the secretary. I joined last year, so I'm helping with some of the coordination, and thanks, Tish, for putting this on. It's really going to be the same format this year, so we're looking at Saturday, April 29th, and having all of the kids gather at the Hanlon School, which we know is a little bit of a challenge this year, given the dynamic over there. They used to collect on the fields to the left of the school. Our suggestion would be to have them collect on the right-hand side of the school in the parking lot area, which is still pretty clear over there. That usually happens around 8:30 or so in the morning, and then we have the parade come down all the way to Morrison at around nine o'clock, and then have the ceremony at the field. And then the format at the field would be really identical to years past. We'll have, you know, a couple of dunk tanks and things like that to have some fun down there. We'll have a little bit of a ceremony on the field, getting Wally from, you know, the Red Sox, that type of thing. The softball team is also, our softball league is also going to do it at the same time this year. So we'll have kind of both Little League and softball together and try to, you know, get a fun format down at the field. I think the only real change to the format is they, Lenny and other people on the board wanted to have a little music, so kind of some collecting music at the beginning over by Hanlon, and then there'll be, the desire is to have a DJ that would be down at the fields, just kind of creating a little bit more of a fun environment. But everything else is really the same as in years past.
Excellent. If we only knew a DJ, right, Michael? So yeah, I think this is great. It's a wonderful tradition to see coming back sort of post-COVID. I have made that walk many a time, and it is just a great day, Alex. So I applaud you guys for bringing this back. I also know that you were looking for an official invite to the Select Board. I would certainly be there and would love to be there this year. I couldn't make it last year because we had, I was traveling, but I would absolutely be honored to be there. So you can count me in, and I'm sure that my colleagues, if they are available, would probably join as well.
Yeah, that would be great. I was going to say, Robert and Michael, and I know that Chris Coleman's been involved too, you know, having a couple of you guys there to, you know, say some words to the community and kick the year off would be fantastic. So I would appreciate that.
Well, and let me tell you, Mary Ann's daughter was a player in her day as well, so.
And my boys. I was there last year. I enjoyed it.
That's right.
And many years before that.
So with that, I would take proposed action.
So I move that the Select Board approve the Westwood Little League Parade for Saturday, April 29th, 2023, to begin at 9:00 AM at the Hanlon School, contingent, of course, upon the final review by the Public Safety and Health Departments.
I second that.
All right, roll call, that vote. Ms. LeBlanc Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. I hope you guys have a great sunny and warm day on Saturday, April 29th, Alex.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we'll be wishing for that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the time.
All right, next up, we have cost of living adjustment, a one-time additional COLA for retirees that are part of the Norfolk County Retirement System. Chris, why don't you take us through the details on this one, please? Or would you like to Molly to do that?
Molly, if you're just prepared, I'm happy to do it. Okay.
I'm happy to do it. So I'm not sure if you're aware, the retirees of the town of Norwood and certain members of the Norwood Public Schools participate in the Norfolk County Retirement System. So that's a regional system of about 20 communities. All are on the smaller side, so they don't have enough resources to have, go ahead.
Westwood, right?
I'm sorry, Westwood. I was reading something else. Westwood, small enough that they don't want to have their own retirement board, so they regionalize and have one group one. So we're a part of that group. Every year, retirees are eligible for a certain cost of living adjustment on their pension. It's not on their full pension. It's on a percentage of their pension. It's a little bit complicated. In the end of 2022, Governor Baker made a one-time adjustment saying that the cost of living adjustment, which is set at a maximum of 3% for FY '23 and FY '23 only, could be 5% retroactive back to July 1st, 2022. In terms of numbers, it's a maximum benefit of $360 per retiree if they're at the maximum of the pension. If they have a slightly lower pension, it could be slightly less than that appropriated amount. The Mass Teachers Retirement System, which is where the vast majority of our The Mass Teachers Retirement System, which is where the vast majority of our Westwood Public Schools employees are part of, has adopted this one-time increase from 3% to 5%. So just to be consistent with our retirees, I think it's the right move. In terms of cost, the total cost for the Norfolk County Retirement System is 1.7 million. The town of Westwood is approximately 6.89% of the retirement system. And so the back of the napkin math there is that it'll be about $117,000 spread out between now and when the pension is fully funded in FY '31, I believe is our, is the target date. And I'm happy to answer. Any questions that I can on that?
Any questions from either of my colleagues? I would entertain a motion. Thank you, Molly. Very helpful description.
I move that the Select Board vote to approve a one-time additional 2% cost of living increase for retirees in the Norfolk County Retirement System.
I second that.
Roll call vote. Ms. LeBlanc Cummings.
Aye.
Mr. Walsh.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you very much, Molly. Okay. Next up, we are going to review the proposed revisions to the Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Advisory Committee bylaws. Chris, would you like to take us through this, or would you like to have Town Council do that?
Pat, if you're able.
Sure.
You worked with the committee.
There wasn't a significant amount of change. They had several issues they had to work through. And the biggest one was they had to, they had a quorum that was more than they actually had appointees. So now that they've defined quorum to be more than half the appointed members, but no case should it be less than three. The size of that committee kind of ebbs and flows a little bit, depending on what's going on. The other major changes were mostly nomenclature. We changed Board of Selectmen to Select Board. And we dealt with some appointments in terms of one of the potential appointees was the town engineer. We don't have a town engineer anymore. We have contract engineering. And they have access to that on an as-needed basis, but it's not a member of the committee. And each PTO that's interested may appoint someone who the Select Board can appoint to the committee if they so choose. And that's, that really covers most of the change.
Just a question for you. Do they, have they sort of filled their secretary position? And do they have somebody handling minutes, et cetera?
Yeah, they do. Maria, the last time I was before them, it looked like Maria Constantini had picked up that role.
Excellent. Okay. Any questions from either of my colleagues with respect to any of the changes from ped bike safety?
No questions.
Nope. No. Seems pretty straightforward. So I move that the Select Board accept the revised bylaw revisions for the Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Advisory Committee as written with no revisions.
I second that.
Before I take the roll call vote, Pat, I do have one question with respect to the language and the way this is set up. More than half of the appointed members, when they have those ebbs and flows, what, what happens when they are, you know, if it says that they're supposed to have a committee of X and they don't meet the quorum requirements?
They don't have a minimum anymore. They have a maximum of eight residents appointed at large. So there's no minimum. They could shrink down. They couldn't go below three because they have to have three people to vote on something. So it's between three and eight.
Okay. All right. Based on the aforementioned proposed action and the second, take a roll call vote. Ms. LeBlanc Cummings.
Aye.
Mr. Walsh.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Okay, next up, that concludes our new business section, and we have minutes to approve. So were there any changes to the minutes for our February 13th meeting?
No changes.
No changes. So I move that, I move that we approve the Select Board regular meeting minutes of February 13th, 2023, as written.
I second that.
Roll call vote. Ms. LeBlanc Cummings.
Aye.
Mr. Walsh.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So this concludes our regular business. We will be going into executive session. So we'll be going into executive session to discuss one issue pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A subsection 2183 to discuss strategy with respect to the collective bargaining for union personnel, specifically Westwood Permanent Firefighters Association Local 1994, IAFF, a discussion of which in open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's negotiating position. The board will not be returning to opening, open session. So do I have a motion to move to executive session?
I move that we go to an executive session for the aforementioned reason.
I second that.
Roll call vote. Ms. LeBlanc Cummings.
Aye.
Mr. Walsh.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you, everyone. Our next meeting is scheduled to be the 13th of March at 6:00 p.m. via Zoom. And we will be, as we said, not coming back, so thank you all. Have a good night. Stay safe with the snow, and we'll see you again here at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.